Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone can hear me. And welcome to our third virtual national study session. Thank you very much for joining us. My name is Rachel Richardson. I'm one of the specialist nurses here at PC UK. It works predominantly on the support line, our telephone and email service for anyone affected by pancreatic cancer. And I've been at the charity now for not far off three years. Prior to that, I worked as an upper GI nurse at a local district general hospital, caring and supporting patients with esophageal gastric and HPV malignancies, working closely with the specialist centres. And I'm based in North East England. Earlier this year, due to COVID-19, we had to postpone our educational sessions on dietetic management and pancreatic cancer, which were planned to take place in Newcastle and Manchester, delivered by the dietetic teams in each area. So today, we're really happy to bring you an adapted virtual version of these original events with an introduction to dietetic management and pancreatic cancer. But before we get going, just got a few things to share with you first. So if you'd like to tweet today, that would be great. And the hashtag is #PCUKstudyday and should be on your screen now. And before today, you should have received a digital delegate pack, which contains the agenda for the session, our speakers' bios, and links to useful publications and resources relating to today's topic. We have a whole host of information on our website, along with publications that you can download and order physical copies of for free. If you have any questions for our speakers, that would be great. Please note them down, ready for the Q and A, which we'll have at the end of the session. And when it comes to the Q and A, you can pop your questions in the chat, which is at the bottom on the bar of your screen. Or you can raise your hand, so you can go to participants. And there's an option there at the bottom to raise your digital hand. And probably best to not post your chat, sorry, not post your questions in the chat until we have the Q and A, and then that way we'll not miss any. And also feel free to send in general comments and messages to all attendees and speakers in the chat function throughout. And thank you very much to Eritac for sponsoring these sessions. And their support makes these events possible, and we're very grateful to them. Just to let you know that we are recording this session and we'll share it on our website after the event, along with the presentations. And we'll send you an email when it's ready, so you can watch again or share it with colleagues. And so first up, I'm going to be giving you a quick introduction to pancreatic cancer. And hopefully everyone can see my screens. And so this is just the quickest whistle stop ever in 10 minutes, introduction to pancreatic cancer. As many of you will know, and nor would be aware, pancreatic cancer is known as the deadliest common cancer. It's the 11th most common cancer and the fifth largest cause of cancer death. And you'll see here that the number of new cases per year is closely parallel to the number of deaths. And that's because pancreatic cancer has the lowest survival among all common cancers. And the graph here shows five-year survival for the 20 most common cancers in England. Five-year survival in the period 2011 to 2015 is shown by the turquoise bars and how it has changed since 1971, represented by the pink arrows. And I've shown very clearly here, pancreatic cancer has the lowest five-year survival at just 7%. And sadly, little has changed in more than four decades. So with five-year survival standing at 7%, the one-year survival for people diagnosed with pancreatic cancer is 24%. And that means that three in four people will die within a year. But even more alarming is that, very sadly, one in four people will die within a month of being diagnosed. So early diagnosis of this disease is what will change these survival rates. Only 16% of people with pancreatic cancer are diagnosed at an early stage, so stage one and two. And you can see here that the difference that would make to one-year survival. 51% of people are diagnosed with pancreatic cancer when it is at stage four or metastatic pancreatic cancer. And one-year survival is just 7.8% for this group. So just coming very briefly onto a little bit of anatomy and physiology. So the pancreas is a soft oblong gland. It's about six inches long and one inch thick. It's located deep in the abdomen. Part of the pancreas is sandwiched between the stomach and the spine. And the other part is nestled in the curve of the duodenum, or the first part of the small intestine. And the organ itself is divided into three distinct parts, into a head, body, and a tail. See, the majority of pancreatic cancers occur in the head of the organ. And this is the bit that sits right into the duodenum. So it's, the pancreas is situated right in the epicenter of so many things, so lots and lots of structures and vessels very nearby. This is why pancreatic cancers are often inoperable, as they involve nearby structures and have contact with major arteries and veins, or can completely encase these. Very quickly and quite simply, the pancreas has two functions. So we talk about an exocrine function and an endocrine function. So the exocrine function is concerned with the role of the pancreas and how we absorb and break down the food that we eat. So whenever we start to think about food or begin to eat, our pancreas is stimulated and it produces digestive enzymes, which allow us to break down carbohydrates, fats, and proteins. And this absorption happens in the duodenum. It's the astrocyte cells that are found in the pancreas that secrete these enzymes when stimulated. And the enzymes travel along the pancreatic duct and become activated when they reach the duodenum. There are also ductular cells which produce bicarbonate, which neutralises the stomach acid. The other main function of the pancreas is the endocrine function. And this allows regulation of the blood sugar. Is scattered throughout the pancreas are islets of Langerhans. 75% of islets are contained, sorry, beta cells which produce insulin, which lowers the blood sugar. And there are also alpha cells that secrete glucagon, which cause the blood sugar to rise. And there are also cells that are called delta cells, which secrete the hormone somatostatin, which inhibits the secretion of pancreatic hormones, i.e. glucagon and insulin. So how do people with pancreatic cancer present? And there's quite a lot of symptoms listed there. So we know that non-regular GP attenders often can become frequent attenders with nonspecific symptoms, usually over a period of six to 12 months. And research does actually tell us that pancreatic tumour can be there for a very long time, possibly 10 years, before it causes any symptoms. And this may be even longer if the disease has found to have metastasised at the point of diagnosis. And any symptoms people have can be quite vague at first, and they may come and go. And some things to watch out for are a new diagnosis of a DVT or PE, which just comes out of the blue. We know that 44% of people are diagnosed in A and E versus 22% in other cancers. And this is most often following presentation with painless jaundice. And the other red flag is diabetes. And so this might look like a new diagnosis of diabetes, but it's more than likely what we call type 3C diabetes. Or it could also happen where somebody has had very well-controlled type 2 diabetes for a long period of time, but all of a sudden their blood sugars begin to fluctuate. And so these are the most common ongoing symptoms associated with pancreatic cancer. And really, all of these, either directly or indirectly, can impact nutritional status. So as time is short, I just wanted to elaborate on a couple of these. And so the top one, pancreatic exocrine insufficiency. I know we're coming on to that later in the morning, so I'll not say a great deal. And then also a loss of appetite and weight loss. And then I'm also just going to take a couple of things about gastric outlet obstruction. And so we know that when there's a tumour in the pancreas, especially in the head of the pancreas, that this impacts on the production of digestive enzymes, leading to signs of PEI. People are likely to be losing weight, and they may have already lost significant weight by the time of diagnosis. And people may be experiencing difficult-to-manage bowel symptoms, early satiety, wind, bloating, abdominal cramps. And this can then result in loss of appetite, or there can be other other things that result in loss of appetite. And prevalence of PEI varies greatly in the literature. And some quote it to be between 30 and 90% in pancreatic cancer patients. And this percentage is even greater in patients that have undergone pancreatic resection. The way in which PEI is managed is by patients taking pancreatic enzyme replacement therapy. And the idea being that whenever they eat food, or whether that's a meal or a snack, or milk drinks, or a supplement that they take to compensate for what the pancreas is not able to do. And so, as I said, just a couple of things about gastric outlet obstruction. And so when a pancreatic tumour is sizable, it may cause an obstruction at the level of the pylorus, and the valve at the bottom of the stomach that controls passage of food into the duodenum. And this blockage will prevent food from passing through. So we would expect that the stomach would stretch to a certain amount, and then it will reach a point where it will no longer stretch. And this is when a patient will vomit. And it often happens later in the day. And and it can resolve overnight when the patient's resting and are not eating. And after they, a patient vomits, they often feel a lot better, but then the cycle begins again. And clearly, patients will lose weight, and they may also become quite dehydrated. And often, people will require hospital admission, they have their stomach drained, and possible consideration of a duodenal stent. So we know that 6% of patients with pancreatic cancer present with gastric outlet obstruction. And 20% of people with advanced disease go on to develop it. So in summary, pancreatic cancer is incredibly tough to diagnose. It's tough to treat. And I appreciate we haven't had time to touch on active anti-cancer treatment. And it's tough to survive. And given the role that the pancreas plays in digestion, so many of the symptoms and challenges that people face are in relation to diet and nutrition. And it's vital that we know how best to manage these symptoms and possible conditions in order to ensure that people with pancreatic cancer live as well and for as long as they can. So I'm now pleased to introduce you to Sophie Pearson, who is a HPV specialist dietitian at the Manchester Royal Infirmary. And Sophie will tell us about malnutrition and pancreatic cancer. Thanks.
Morning. My name's Sophie. I'm one of the HPV specialist dietitians at Manchester Royal Infirmary. And I'm going to be talking today about malnutrition and pancreatic cancer. Our MFT HPV dietitian's email address is on the slide there. So if you've got any questions after today, please feel free to email us on there. So the topics we're going to be talking about is cachexia and sarcopenia, the impact of malnutrition in pancreatic cancer, so thinking about outcomes, quality of life for patients, as well as causes and mechanisms, things that are maybe more specific to pancreatic cancer compared to other cancers, in how patients can become so malnourished, assessment and screening tools. Lastly, and then it's time for any questions. So BAPEN defines malnutrition as an imbalance of energy, protein, and other nutrients. And then this has effects on patients' body shape, size, and composition function and clinical outcome. And that's what we're going to be focusing on today. So cancer cachexia is defined as a multifactorial syndrome, as ongoing loss of skeletal muscle mass with or without fat loss. That it's not fully reversible using conventional nutritional support, and eventually leads to functional impairments. And there's been a lot of evidence over the last few years to show the negative impact that cachexia can have on cancer patients' prognosis. And there, this is just a statistic. So malnutritional cachexia is present up to 80% of all pancreatic cancer patients. So it's really prevalent in this patient group. And sarcopenia may be one of the components of this. So sarcopenia is defined as a loss of lean muscle mass distinct from cancer-related generalised weight loss. And this can lead to loss of strength and aerobic capacity, and that eventually has effects on patients' functional capacity as well. So I've just got a study here, sarcopenia in an overweight or obese patient is an adverse prognostic factor in pancreatic cancer. And I've just got this, this diagram, which I think quite nicely demonstrates how sometimes sarcopenia can be masked in a lot of these patients. So as you can see, everyone who was underweight BMI less than 18.5 was sarcopenic. However, those with a normal BMI, still over half of those patients were sarcopenic. And even patients with an overweight or obese BMI, there was still 18 compared to 26 patients that were sarcopenic. And just move on to the next slide. So thinking about the impact of this for patients, this was a study that was done last year, the impact study, early loss of skeletal muscle mass in advanced pancreatic cancer patients. And what it showed is basically, loss of skeletal muscle mass is significantly associated with a worse overall survival. And in this patient group, over half were over 70 years old, and half also had metastatic disease. But at baseline, 73% of those patients were sarcopenic, and the median BMI was 24. So it's just showing how the skeletal muscle mass wasting is masked. And on the right here is the graph, which shows the loss of skeletal muscle mass of more than 10% compared to the loss of skeletal muscle mass, which is less than 10%, which is the blue line. So as you can see, the patients that had a loss of skeletal muscle mass of less than 10% had a significantly improved survival. Going back to thinking about cachexia, this was a study that measured the body composition changes in patients with advanced pancreatic cancer whilst undergoing chemotherapy. And what they did is measuring body composition using CT images. So these are all CT images here. And we've got the first group, which was 19% of the patient group that had no wasting of fat or muscle mass. We've got the second group, which was 17% of the patients that had fat-only wasting. And then we've got the last group, which had muscle and fat wasting, and this was 64%. So most of the patients did have some kind of wasting. And what this demonstrated was the overall survival in these patients was significantly correlated with their muscle and fat wasting. So in the first group, you can see the different areas. So the yellow is the visceral adipose fat tissue. The red parts are the muscle. The blue is the subcutaneous fat tissue, and the green bits are the intramuscular fat. So in this group, you can see from those images over time that there wasn't much change. In the fat-only wasting, you can see the yellow parts have reduced and the blue parts. And then see in the muscle and fat wasting, you can see all of the parts are reducing slowly. So what this study also found was that, compared, comparing the groups of the fat-only wasting to the muscle-fat wasting, they both had equally significant impact on overall survival. So adipose tissue does also have a impact in cachexia, and it's not just thinking about muscle. So although we looked at survival and prognosis for these patients, we heard at the beginning that and on average, the survival for pancreatic cancer is still low. And what studies have found is that quality of life is really important for patients. And malnutrition can have a big impact on that. And I think it's important to think about when we're planning our dietetic treatment and aims to improve the quality of life for these patients. So a study found that managing gut symptoms and complex dietary issues can have a big impact on the quality of life. We know that levels of depression and anxiety are higher for these patients. And and there was, there's also some evidence to show that quality of life after diagnosis can be a prognostic indicator. So improving patients' quality of life can help their prognosis as well. So it just really shows the scope. We've got to improve the supportive care of these patients. And thinking as well, nutritional status impacts patients' body image and mood, as well as function. So in the NICE guidelines here, it says we should be assessing the psychological impact of GI symptoms and changes to appetite and nutrition for these patients regularly. Now, thinking about the sort of mechanisms and causes of malnutrition and pancreatic cancer, this is just a bit of a diagram to show how everything links. So we've got the overall systemic inflammation and the production, increase in production of these pro-inflammatory cytokines, which has a catabolic effect on the body. So increase of catabolism of muscle mass and and also increases energy expenditure. We've also got decrease in energy intake. So we're going to talk about that on the next slide, and the effect of symptoms this can have. As well as the endocrine and exocrine function of the pancreas, and how this affects malnutrition, which we'll talk about on the next slide. And we've already discussed a bit about muscle mass and sarcopenia. So negative energy and protein balance, so we've got all these symptoms on the left here. Abdominal pain, nausea, vomiting, this could be related to a mechanical gastric outlet obstruction, acid reflux, diarrhea, constipation, taste changes, early satiety, and fatigue, hyperglycemia, and low mood. And all of this leads to more nutritional losses and a decrease in nutritional intake. In terms of the endocrine and exocrine function of the pancreas, that has a big impact on malnutrition, because we've got the endocrine cells which are secreting the insulin to the blood. So if less insulin is secreted, we've got less glucose going to the body. And hyperglycemia, which we discussed on the previous slide. And often, patients can develop this different type of diabetes called type 3 diabetes, which Marie is going to discuss later, probably in more detail later this morning. And then we've also got the exocrine function of the pancreas, so releasing all of those digestive enzymes in the pancreatic juice. And if this is reduced, the symptoms we can get is this diarrhea, so that oily, pale, floating stools, the wind. And and Mary is going to talk a bit more about this as well. So thinking about screening tools, you've got your MUS tool here, which everybody's probably seen before. And and the International Study Group in Pancreatic Surgery released some guidelines a couple of years ago that said, percent of body weight loss over time and BMI should be assessed routinely, which, which MUS score does. However, they also say that using more than one of the existing malnutrition assessment scores should be calculated. So the one that we use regularly in our team here is the scored patient-generated subjective global assessment. So there's two parts to it. The first part, the patient completes, and the second part, the healthcare professional completes. And what studies, studies have been done in the pancreatic cancer patient group, and they found that an improvement in this score is significantly correlated with a decreased risk of mortality. So in terms of what the patient can complete, obviously, if it can't be completed by the patient, it can be done by the healthcare professional. So we've got their weight, what their current and recent weight is, what their height is, and what they weighed one month ago, six months ago, and also what their weight is currently doing, is how it's stabilised. We've also got the food intake part, so looking at what their food intake is like normally, are they managing liquids only? Their symptoms and how their symptoms are affecting their intake. So we've got some things I didn't mention, dry mouth, mouth sores, problem swallowing. And there's also a box there, you can add in something else, like, for example, mood that we discussed. And the fourth part is how their activity is. Are they bedbound? Are they able to do most of their normal activities? So it takes all of that into account. And then the second part's completed by the healthcare professional. So this can be a dietitian, but also can be a doctor, a nurse, or another therapist. So we just use that score from the first sheet. And then we add in how their disease affects their nutrition. And we look at their metabolic demands, including their temperature, physical exams. So even if triceps gain full thickness, for example, is not available, you can still use a subjective evaluation, just visibly, of their muscles. And all of this is added up and gives you a score down here. So it has been validated in this patient group, and it's really useful. And it sort of just brings together everything that we've discussed today in terms of causes and how to identify malnutrition and sarcopenia in these patients. And that's the end of the presentation. If there's any questions, can ask them now. And that's just the references there.
And thank you, Sophie. And that was, that was really interesting. And so up next, we're joined by Mary Mahone, who is a surgical dietitian at the Freeman Hospital in Newcastle. And Mary will share with us the main symptoms of pancreatic exocrine insufficiency.
Hello, everyone, and thank you all so much for joining today's webinar. I am here today to talk to you about the symptoms of pancreatic exocrine insufficiency, which we can shorten to PEI. So as an overview, the topics we will be covering in this session are pancreatic function, and specifically, the exocrine function of the pancreas, which will provide some background understanding of PEI, PEI itself, along with its symptoms and diagnosis. So to set the scene, we need to start with the pancreas, what it is and what it does. The pancreas is a glandular organ located in the abdomen behind the stomach. And it has an endocrine and a digestive exocrine function. As an endocrine gland, it is responsible for regulating blood sugar levels and secretes the hormones insulin, glucagen, somatostatin, and pancreatic polypeptide. As part of the digestive system, it functions as an exocrine gland secreting pancreatic juice through the pancreatic duct. This juice contains digestive proenzymes, which activate into enzymes in the duodenum and the nutrients in our food, and bicarbonate, which neutralises acid entering the duodenum from the stomach and allows these enzymes to work. Here, we can look at the pancreas in a bit more detail. The islets of Langerhans, or the endocrine pancreas, consist of alpha, beta, and delta cells, which are responsible for hormone secretion. The islet distribution between the head and the body of the pancreas are similar, but it is twofold higher in the tail region. The astrocyte cells and the duct tissue, which make up about 85% of the pancreatic mass, are responsible for the exocrine function and the release of proenzymes and bicarbonate. To understand PEI, it's necessary to learn more about the role of the pancreas in digestion. So from here, we say goodbye to the endocrine pancreas and focus solely on the exocrine. The foods we eat are made up of many different constituents at a molecular level, called macro and micronutrients. The macronutrients are what provide energy to the body, so fat, protein, and carbohydrate. The pancreas has a crucial role in the digestion of all three of these. Cholecystokinin, CCK, a digestive and digestive hormone, stimulates the release of bicarbonate and pancreatic proenzymes, pancreatic proenzymes, which activate into lipase, proteins and amylase. Fat is broken down into smaller parts called fatty acids by lipase. Proteins are digested by proteases into amino acid and peptides, while carbohydrates are broken down by amylase into disaccharides. The pancreatic enzyme release occurs in response to nutritional intake. So from here, we need to think about the different phases of digestion in relation to that exocrine pancreas. The initial step is the cephalic phase, and this is mediated by the vagal nerve, which is stimulated by seeing, smelling and tasting food. Once ingested, the food is broken down by chewing and by mixing with amylase-rich saliva. In the gastric phase, food arrives in the stomach from the esophagus. It is mixed with that stomach acid and a churning motion turns it into a thick semi-liquid called chyme. At the same time, gastric distension increases pancreatic enzyme secretion via the gastropancreatic reflex. The stomach pumps the chyme into the duodenum, and it's this passage of nutrients through the duodenum, which provides the most robust stimulation of exocrine pancreatic secretion. This is the intestinal phase and it is mediated by CCK. So now that we understand pancreatic function, we can start to consider the implications of what happens when it fails to work as it should as a result of malignancy. So PEI occurs due to the primary or secondary disturbance of exocrine pancreatic function leading to mal digestion. This means that there can be inadequate absorption of nutrients and consequently nutritional deficiencies. PEI in patients with pancreatic cancer is multifactorial. Primary insufficiency results due to a reduction in of exocrine secretion caused by the disease itself. Now, this may be due to the obstruction of the pancreatic duct by a tumor blocking the transport of enzymes from the pancreas to the duodenum, or the damage of the exocrine pancreas, in particular the head. In a prospective assessment on patients with a head of pancreas tumor, it was found that at diagnosis, the prevalence of exocrine insufficiency was as high as 66%, which increased to 92% after a median follow-up of only two months. PEI may also arise due to abnormal CCK secretion, where the acinocellules will not be stimulated and will therefore not release the pancreatic enzymes. Finally, if we think about what happens in surgery, there will be a loss of pancreatic tissue following resection, and PEI here would depend on a number of factors, such as the quantity and quality of that remaining pancreas. Secondary PEI in cancer patients can occur from an alarming change following surgery, such as changes in intestinal pH following a gastric or duodenal resection. Or if we consider when patients undergo palliative surgery to bypass a malignancy in the bile duct, pancreas, stomach or duodenum, where enzymes and bile will arrive in the intestine at a different time to chyme from the stomach, further enhancing the symptoms of PEI. So if not enough enzymes reach the duodenum, some of the nutrients of food will not be digested. These nutrients will continue to travel along the small intestine and into the large bowel, often triggering unpleasant symptoms. Now, gut bacteria might digest some of the nutrients, however, the rest will be expelled in stool. Out of our three macro nutrients, fat malabsorption tends to be the most visible problem in PEI for two reasons. First of all, mouth, stomach and small intestine also produce amylase and proteins to break down proteins and carbohydrates enough to compensate for a malfunction in pancreas. On the other hand, digestion of fat is more reliant on pancreatic lipase, which means that fat malabsorption tends to be an earlier and more significant problem in PEI. Secondly, is the reason that fat malabsorption produces more obvious changes in bowel function when compared to protein or carbohydrate malabsorption, making the latter more difficult to diagnose. If there's not enough fat in the diet to trigger the symptoms of fat malabsorption, PEI diagnosis is often missed and weight loss, muscle wasting and other symptoms of malnutrition can occur. For this reason, amongst others, low-fat diets, which only hide the symptoms of PEI and do not treat the real problem, should not be used. So finally, into the symptoms, PEI can take time to develop and at first the symptoms might be mild. Symptoms can include abdominal discomfort, pain in particular around the stomach or lower back, bloating, severe meteorism, where excess gas accumulates in the GI tract and causes the abdomen to distend, flatulence and burping. Individuals may experience more frequent bowel movements throughout the day or urgency after eating or after receiving an enteral feed, dyspepsia, nausea, colicky or postprandial abdominal pain or reflux. Many studies use the onset of steatorrhea to diagnose PEI. And personally, these tend to be some of the symptoms that I look out for in my patients initially. Steatorrhea appears as fat in the stool and it can cause stools to become bulky and oily. They may look pale, orange, yellow or chalky in color. They can be foul smelling and often loose or runny. There may be visible undigested food in the stools. Stools can float. They may be difficult to flush and they may even stain the toilet bowl. Now, a study which looked at the relationship between pancreatic enzyme output and malabsorption, in this case in patients with chronic pancreatitis, found that steatorrhea didn't actually become apparent until more than 90% of the exocrine function is lost, meaning that steatorrhea is actually a late symptom of malabsorption and fat malabsorption may occur earlier and without these obvious abdominal symptoms. Furthermore, we should not solely rely on patient-reported steatorrhea, as this is not always a reliable way to form a diagnosis. This was highlighted in two separate studies, which found significant variation in patient-reported steatorrhea when compared to the laboratory results of proven PEI, and a difference of over 30% was found in both studies. Now, again, both of these were on subjects with chronic pancreatitis. However, I think these results can be extrapolated to advise caution when we assess PEI with pancreatic cancer. Consequently, due to how it occurs, steatorrhea will only be apparent in patients consuming an adequate intake of dietary fat. And unfortunately, many patients will restrict their fat intake either in an attempt to reduce symptoms or in response to inappropriate advice prompting fat restriction, which I've already alluded to is not advised, as this can mask PEI and actually exacerbate malnutrition in an already at-risk group. Moving away from bowels and to the PEI, PEI can also lead to biochemical consequences if left untreated. Diabetic patients can run the risk of hypoglycemia due to carbohydrate malabsorption. Over time, fat malabsorption can lead to deficiencies in fat soluble vitamins, so our vitamin A, D, E, which in themselves, if not treated, can lead to bone problems, bruising and poor wound healing, higher rates of infections, visual problems, neurological symptoms, muscle weaknesses and fatigue. Other biochemical deficiencies may be seen prealbumin, retinal binding protein, magnesium, selenium, zinc, copper and iron. There are also anthropometric and functional symptoms of PEI, such as unexplained weight loss and failure to gain weight despite a good dietary intake. So here, despite patients being in energy or individuals being in energy excess, they will fail to gain weight due to malabsorption. Also, if we think back to that long list of gastrointestinal symptoms that we've discussed, as you can imagine, these will pose some serious barriers to intake. Weight loss can also lead to sarcopenia and loss of muscle function over time, and there is a significant association with PEI and sarcopenia in pancreatic disease. Sarcopenia is found in up to 65% of pancreatic cancer patients. It is associated with decreased survival and also higher toxicity in patients receiving chemotherapy. So now we know what PEI is, what to look out for, how do we diagnose it? It is difficult to test the function of the pancreas because it's buried deep in the abdomen. However, some methods of diagnosis are the coefficient of fat absorption, which measures the percentage of fat an individual absorbs, the mixed triglyceride breath test, which quantifies the amount of lipase which is secreted by the pancreas. Now, neither of these are commonly used in practice in the UK. However, the most recognized method is fecal elastase, which measures the levels of pancreatic enzymes in the stool, and also clinical assessment, which depends on professional judgment. So fecal elastase is the most commonly used method of PEI diagnosis in the UK. Elastase, a type of protein, is highly table and is not degraded during the passage through the gastrointestinal tract, meaning levels are a good indication of the output of pancreatic enzymes. Elastase secretion may be reduced earlier and to a greater extent than the other digestive enzymes. It is not affected by transit time and not affected by pancreatic enzyme replacement therapy. Therefore, it is a true reflection of exocrine function. However, on the other hand, according to research, fecal elastase has limited accuracy, but it is good practice to request if PEI is suspected. Profuse watery stool samples may result in a falsely low fecal elastase due to dilution, so it should only be measured on a more solid sample. It can often fail to detect mild insufficiency, and it is also dependent on the practicalities in your own individual centre or setting. So in terms of the results, a fecal elastase of greater than 500 micrograms reflects a normal pancreatic function. Between 200 and 500, the pancreas is working suboptimally. And using definitions from the UEG guidelines, there may be a reduction in secretions, but this does not necessarily indicate PEI. However, at this level, even if there are treatments or if there are symptoms reported, I would treat. Mild PEI is defined as reduced secretion of one or more enzymes with normal bicarbonate concentration in duodenal juice and normal fecal fat excretion. Where moderate is the reduced enzyme output and bicarbonate concentration, normal fecal fat excretion, and these range in between 100 to 200 micrograms. Severe PEI is when fecal elastase is less than 100. Here, patients will have a reduced enzyme output and bicarbonate concentration plus a high likelihood of steatorrhea. In practice, fecal elastase is not always ideal, as it is vulnerable to time constraints and suitability of the sample. And more often than not, we do depend on our own clinical judgment to diagnose PEI. Thorough history taking is recommended to capture any gastrointestinal symptoms. Nutritional status can be assessed through diet histories or 24-hour recall by diet histories from patients and monitoring micronutrients. While anthropometric and functional status can be evaluated and monitored through hand-grip functional tests, such as the timed up and go. A combination of assessment methods is likely to provide the most comprehensive assessment of PEI. If left untreated or undiagnosed, pancreatic insufficiency can lead to malnutrition, higher infection risk, fat soluble vitamin deficiencies, higher fracture risk, higher risk of cardiovascular events, poor glycemic control, poor quality of life and higher mortality. So to summarize, the secretion of digestive enzymes can be affected in PEI, and extremely reduced exocrine pancreatic secretion has been significantly correlated with poor survival. Even if patients do not have PEI at the time of their diagnosis, most will develop it during the course of their disease. So it's important that we monitor them for symptoms. Clinical judgment of symptoms is one of the best forms of diagnosis in practice. So thank you so much for listening and I do hope that you found this helpful. I've included some references here for anyone who is keen to learn a little bit more about PEI.
Thank you, Mary. That was really, you know, you explained that so, so well. So thank you for that. Really interesting to hear about steatorrhea being a late sign of PEI. And I know we often come across patients that they see health professionals but have PEI perhaps, but because they don't have steatorrhea, they don't end up with pancreatic enzyme replacement therapy. So thank you so much for that. But last but not least, we're joined by Marie Labakar, who is a specialist HPH dietitian at Manchester Royal Infirmary. So building on Marie's presentation, Marie will explore some of the treatment options for PEI.
Good morning. My name is Marie Labakar. I'm one of the specialists, senior specialist HPH dieticians at Manchester Royal Infirmary. Thank you to Pancreatic Cancer UK for organizing this virtual study day. And thank you for asking me to present on pancreatic enzyme replacement therapy, anteroinutrition and diabetes. So first of all, our learning objectives. Well, I hope that by the end of the session, you'll be able to understand the basic principles of PERT, anteroinutrition and diabetes management in pancreatic cancer, and that you'll appreciate a bit more some of the complexities of those interventions in pancreatic cancer. Saying first of all, it's important to acknowledge the fact that the evidence available for the dietetic management in pancreatic cancer is fairly poor and low quality and there's not much certainty. And this became evident when the NICE guidelines in pancreatic cancer in adults were published in 2018. And there's quite a small amount of information in there on what we should be doing dietetically with those patients. I've summarized the main information in there, which is that PERT probably improves nutritional status, that most studies use enteric coated pancreatin, that patients with unresectable, unresectable pancreatic cancer probably benefit from PERT, that anteroinutrition is linked to less post-op complications than parenteral nutrition, and that there isn't enough evidence to recommend the use of fish oils in weight loss. So when we provide pancreatic enzyme replacement therapy, what we try and do is mimic the normal physiology of pancreatic enzyme action. PERT formulations contain lipase, amylase and elastase, and these enzymes digest fats, starches and protein into smaller particles that can then be absorbed into the bloodstream. And there are multiple formulations available in the UK. We have enteric and non- enteric coated capsules, we have powdered products, but generally, we would recommend the use of enteric coated capsules. And some of the ones available are Creon 25,000, Nutrism 22 and Pancreas HL. Those come in the form of gelatin capsules that dissolve in the stomach. The enteric coated mini tablets or mini microspheres are released. And each enteric coated mini tablet or mini microspear then disintegrates when the pH increases in the duodenum. So when the pH increases above 5.5, the entry coating disintegrates and the enzymes are released. The licensed formulation of pancreatin in the UK are all from Persian origin. So that's quite important and it's important to gather the allergy and intolerance status of the patients before they're prescribed. It's also important to discuss religious beliefs and vegetarianism and veganism. For patients to give informed consent, they also need to understand the indications and the risks of benefits of PERTs. So it's important to explain why the patient requires PERT, the timeframe they're likely to be on it for, and to manage expectations in terms of people burden. Often as well, it will improve concordance if patients are told the benefits of taking PERTs, the fact that it will likely minimize their PEI symptoms, improve the quality of life, their weight, their strength maintenance, and the positive impact that will have in maintaining or improving their nutritional status. and the positive impact that will have in maintaining or improving their nutritional status in preparation or after cancer treatment. Again, there's not very much evidence in terms of the dosage that we should be recommending for PERT. Creon, Nutrisyme and Pancrease come in between 20,000 and 25,000 unit lipase per capsule. Practice varies greatly across the UK. In Manchester, we have local guidelines for PERT in cancer, which are based on the fact that typically the pancreas produces 720,000 units of lipase for an average 300 or 600 calories meal. So we recommend patients are started at about 10% of the value required to maintain normal digestion. So we recommend three capsules with meals, that's 75,000 units, and two capsules with snacks and nourishing drinks. And this is a starting dose and is likely to be increased. We also recommend that patients avoid dietary and fat restrictions, as that can precipitate weight loss and malnutrition. And we usually advise patients on a fortified diet and on dose titration. We use a gastrointestinal symptom questionnaire, which looks like this, to assess patients' symptoms of PEI and also to monitor their concordance with PERT and the efficacy of PERT. It's very important to provide patients with full education, verbal, written information for the doses to be documented and for the patients to have your contact details if you're the one suggesting they start on enzyme therapy. In terms of the practical aspects, we try and provide advice that is as individualised as possible. So the baseline PERT education we would provide would cover the dosage with meals, snacks, nourishing drinks, the timing, so we would advise patients to take the capsules at the beginning of the meal, but also spread through the meal, that the capsules are washed down with a cold drink, and that they remember to take them with everything nourishing that they eat or drink. And we would provide them with written information for further reading. We would then check their understanding and expand. So maybe discuss the pathophysiology of PEI, explain why the dose needs spreading a bit further. So whether they would like to take one, two or three capsules before each course through their meals to make sure every snack and every nourishing drink is covered with a dose of enzymes. And the storage, the need to keep the enzymes below 25 degrees because heat denatures them. So that means not keeping them on windowsills near radiators, not storing them in cars, in pockets, et cetera. I would say that a referral to a dietitian is essential. It's essential for dose titration because the dietitian is able to carry out a detailed assessment of somebody's diet history, the types of food they have to eat on standard days, on weekends. And it means then the advice is individualised and patients are given a precise advice on how many capsules they need to take, when and how, and how to titrate the dose depending on varying content of meals or sizes of meals and then follow up as well. I think it's important to be aware of barriers to concordance with PERT. So our patients have very variable levels of insight. As healthcare professionals, we've learnt about the gut and about digestion at school and then at university. So we have a really good understanding of how the food is digested. But for patients, sometimes it can be very overwhelming if a healthcare professional just starts discussing food digestion and enzymes and how they work. So it's important to understand and know your patient before you launch into the full explanation of what happens in the body. It's also important to understand and know what the ability of your patient is to remember the information provided, but also to remember when to administer the enzymes. Because obviously, our patients might have pancreatic cancer, but they might have other conditions such as dementia or poor memory, and that might impact on their ability to administer the enzymes. And also, I think if you think of the timing of when we give PERT advice, often those patients are going through a difficult time. They've been given quite distressing diagnosis and it might be a time of anxiety. And that can impact on their ability to understand and retain the information we give them. It's useful to consider enlisting the help of family or friends who live with the patient. They can offer support and prompt. That's also the case if you're seeing somebody who's in hospital. You might need to have a discussion with the nurses about the timing of the administration of the enzymes. Because obviously, drug rounds are usually not done at mealtime. So have a look at your local medicines management policy. And often hospitals will have paperwork for self-administration of medication. And that can be very useful in hospital because then the patient can start self-managing their enzymes before they go home. I think the take-home message about PERT education though is that it's never one-off. Most patients will require ongoing education and that a dietitian is best placed to do that. We generally follow up patients. And this tool helps us assess how much information the patient has retained. And also, it's a good basis for discussion for further education. We find that in practice, patients struggle to remember their PERT doses with snacks and nourishing drinks. Usually, they take them with meals, but they tend to forget about the snacks and the drinks. And it's the practicalities of taking those enzymes out of the home if they go out for a coffee or a piece of cake or to a friend's house. And also, what we found is patients struggle to remember what the symptoms of PEI are. So that means it's then difficult for them to monitor their symptoms and the efficacy of the enzymes. In terms of the legality of prescribing PERT, so the diagnosis and the indication for it should be clearly documented, ideally by a medical team or the prescriber. It's a prescribable product, so check your local infirmary to see how it should be initiated. And because it's a prescribable product, we have to be, it's important to consider the dosage, the administration route and the safety. And to make sure a patient knows that you can get side effects. It's a very safe medication because it's not absorbed into the bloodstream. But you can still get side effects and patients should know that there are alternatives that can be tried. And they should get back in touch with you if they are having an adverse reaction to the enzymes. And again, it's important to review the dosage efficacy and to titrate the dose up. And if the GP is the one providing those prescriptions, then if you have discussions with the patient about the enzymes, it's important to communicate this with the GP. In terms of troubleshooting, some of the difficulties we encounter in clinical practice is that some of our patients sometimes have swallowing difficulties. So we recommend the capsules are taken whole and washed down with a cold drink. But if the patient cannot swallow the enzymes, the capsules, then they can be opened. The mini microspheres have to be mixed with acidic food, not chewed, because that would release the enzymes and it would cause or increase the risk of mouth ulcers. And also, it's important to remember that acid denatures the enzymes. That's why those mini microspheres inside the capsules are enteric coated. So we have to maintain this coating until the enzymes have mixed with the food and reach the duodenum when the pH increases. We sometimes also have patients who report tolerance issues. So they start taking the enzymes and they might experience diarrhoea, bloating, skin rash. It doesn't happen very often, but it does happen. And what we would do there is probably report this and also try an alternative brand. Patients sometimes continue to experience PEI symptoms after they've started taking the enzymes. In Manchester, we start patients routinely on a PPI when they started on PERT because we know that it can improve the efficacy of the enzymes. And if there's hyper acidity in the stomach, it will denature those enzymes earlier than it should. And then there's evidence that in pancreatic cancer, it preserves the pancreatic tissue volume in post-surgical patients. But if in your area that's not the case, then if exocrine insufficiency symptoms continue after titrating the dose of enzymes up, then it's worth considering whether the patient could be started on a PPI. And if they are already on a PPI, whether that could be increased to twice a day. Another issue we often encounter is that patients will say that once they start taking the enzymes, they become constipated. So often, patients at diagnosis will have had a few weeks of suffering from diarrhoea. And when they start taking the enzymes, then the food is better absorbed. And if they have, if they're on the high dose of opioids or if they have a very small oral intake, then the constipation might become more apparent then. So it's important to explain to patients that actually the constipation isn't really a real side effect or an adverse reaction to the enzymes. And that a constipation can occur alongside exocrine insufficiency. So they need to be treated separately. So the PEI is treated with PERT and the constipation needs to be treated separately. So it could be advice on increasing oral intake, increasing fluid intake, physical activity, or it could be the need for laxatives if the patient is believed to have had chronic constipation that was hidden by the malabsorption. The patient should be advised not to treat their constipation by inducing malabsorption because it's very tempting for patients to then stop their enzymes because they don't want to be constipated, increase their abdominal pain, et cetera. Another effect sometimes of starting on enzymes is that blood sugars may increase. So patients may have pre-existing diabetes and when they start taking the enzymes, their blood sugars increase or become more erratic. Or they might have nuanced diabetes and when they start taking the enzymes, those blood sugars shoot up. So it's very important when you start somebody on pancreatic enzyme that you check their blood sugars before and after. So some places check HPA1C routinely or blood sugars. And the most important thing is then to refer promptly to the diabetes team for treatment. And this is our Manchester guidelines for prescribing pancreatic enzyme replacement therapy in cancer. This was designed after no data to Christie's and is awaiting publication. So it details what we would do when somebody is starting on enzymes. So we would start them on a standard dose of 75,000 units with meals, 50,000 units with snacks and nourishing drink. We would prescribe a PPI routinely and we would give them a week trial. And you'll note on there that we wouldn't generally test for fecal elastase because we will assume that somebody who has pancreatic cancer, especially if it's in the head of the pancreas or if they have symptoms that are really suggestive or exocrine insufficiency, the likelihood is they have exocrine insufficiency and a trial of PERT will give us the answer we're looking for. So we would try them for one week and review their symptoms. If the symptoms are ongoing, then we will titrate the dose of the enzymes up to five to six capsules with meals and three capsules with snacks and nourishing drinks. If the diarrhoea is really bad and has worsened, we might consider some loperamide or codeine and we will wait another week. We'll reassess and we'll titrate the dose up until we get to about eight capsules with meals and four capsules with nourishing drinks. And then if symptoms are ongoing, we would recommend a referral to a gastroenterologist just to make sure other possible pathology is ruled out. So next, in terms of enteral nutrition. Obviously, we know that malnutrition and cachexia are major causes of reduced quality of life, decreased survival and treatment failure in pancreatic cancer. What NICE tells us is that we should offer oral and enteral nutrition rather than parenteral nutrition if the gut is functioning. Obviously, in clinical practice, we're often faced with patients who have a really poor prognosis and medical teams that might not consider enteral nutrition on that basis. And it can be quite difficult even for us to assess whether enteral nutrition is indicated or not. So I would say it's important to provide an individualised assessment, consider the aims of the cancer treatment and the prognosis, consider the patient's views, their quality of life, their ability to cope and manage with tube feeding in hospital or at home, and think about the risk versus benefit. There've been a couple of literature reviews that have been published. This one is by Gardner et al. and was published in 2016. And they looked at 11 studies on nutrition in pancreatic cancer. They found two studies on oral supplementation that found that a higher calorie intake had a beneficial impact on weight, but not on in-body mass. And that a stable weight was linked to better quality of life and survival time. They found six studies related to nutrition post pancreatic with duodlectomy. And again, they found that enteral nutrition was superior to parenteral nutrition at improving nutritional status, but there was no difference in survival. PN had a higher rate of complications and a longer return time period to a normal diet and bowel movement after surgery. HPL was looked at in two studies in cancer cachexia. And it was found that it benefited patients in terms of quality of life, subjective global assessment, weight and body composition. And finally, it concluded that there isn't enough evidence to recommend the use of fish oil supplementation. So that's an area that's still ongoing where there's more and more studies coming out. So that might change in the future. And this is another literature review, which looked specifically at nutrition management of pancreatic cancer surgery. And it looked at oral feeding and felt that that was a better strategy post pancreatic surgery than enteral nutrition because of patients staying in hospital for a smaller period of time. They found there was no difference in parameters when they compared patients fed entally and parentally. And they also felt that there wasn't much evidence for the use of gastric decompression with a rice tube. And they felt that decision regarding enteral nutrition is complex, that it's important to consider the root, the type of tube, the size of the tube, the fit formula and the risk of displacement of those tubes, which is quite high. And that we shouldn't really consider enteral nutrition routinely after pancreatic surgery, but that it is appropriate to look at it and consider it selectively in patients who may be extremely malnourished prior to surgery. That should always be an MDT decision. They also looked at the difference between the types of tubes and the sites of the tubes placed. And they found that it was very difficult to compare studies because even in the randomised studies, there was no standardisation of gastric decompression, the types of feed use and the root of feeding in the control groups. Many studies did not show the superiority of any type of tube, whether that was naso-genital or jejunostomy. But they have found that jejunostomy tubes are perceived to be at a higher surgical risk than naso-genital tubes. So it was felt that naso-genital tubes had the best morbidity profile. But they also found that PN was useful if patients experienced delayed gastric emptying for surgery. In terms of the feed type, so that's a question we often get asked. What feed do you use when you've decided that enteral nutrition is... When you've decided that enteral nutrition is appropriate, what feed should you go for? So the ESPN guidelines that came out in two thousand and six recommended that we use peptide feeds and semi or semialimental feeds as first line, which is what we do in Manchester. So we use Peptisol, Peptamin HN or Vital 1.5. Nutrition, I think, have a cheap feed that's just come out. That's high protein, high calorie and peptides. So I think it comes in a five hundred ml bottle. So I think that's something that we are going to probably start choosing fairly soon. So we would usually start the patient on a peptide feed and build their regime up to goal rate and goal volume without any enzymes. And so depending on the patient's location, that might mean feeding them for twenty four hours or it might be cyclic feeding, it will depend, it's very individualized. It will depend on the patient and where they are. And then if if the patient, if we achieve goal rate and the patient has symptoms of exocrine insufficiency, so they might be failing to maintain their weight despite the nutritional requirements being met or they might have P I symptoms, so gastrointestinal discomfort, bloating, evidence of steatorrhea, then we would start adding enzymes to the feed. So then the question is how much enzyme should you use? So if we take, for example, Vital 1.5, if you're giving your patient two thousand calories, that will provide forty four grams of protein, but there will be thirteen grams of long chain triglycerides in the feed. And if we go back to CF guidelines, so to cystic fibrosis guidelines, we know that we should be prescribing about four thousand units of lipase per grams of fat. So thirteen grams would require at least fifty thousand units lipase, which isn't very much for six hundred and sixty mls of feed, let's say administered overnight. So it's also important to consider the site of action, the time of action and the access route. Are you feeding gastriically? Are you feeding jejunally? And that will have an impact on the type of enzymes you're going to use. So we've got our capsules, enteric coated enzymes. We have also powdered enzymes, which are easier to administer in-feed or via tubes. It's important to bear in mind that there's very limited data about the stability of the enzymes, their efficacy and very little evidence on what we should do when we start using enzymes via tubes. As soon as you start opening capsules, mixing powders with bicarbonate and water, it becomes an unlicensed use. So again, it's important to check your local formulary and methods and management guidelines and to see what's recommended in your specific trust. But I've put a copy here of the flow chart we use at Manchester, in Manchester. So we would start the patient on a peptide or semialimental feed and we would go up to goal rate and goal volume. If the patient has P I symptoms or weight loss, then we might consider lowering the rate and increasing the time of feeding. Let's say if they're in ICU, they're not mobile and feeding them over twenty four hours would be okay, then we might do that first to see if it helps with the symptoms. Otherwise, if we have a patient that wants to be fed purely overnight because they're eating and drinking during the day, then we might then start adding enzymes to to the feed. Our preferred option is to add the enzymes directly to the feed just because we find that's practically easier for patients, for nurses, for doctors, everybody. But if a patient is fed gastriically, they can theoretically take capsules, so oral pancreatic enzymes in a capsule form at the beginning of the feed and while the feed is running. And if you would like to add the enzymes to the feed, what we tend to do is start with a starting dose of about fifty thousand unit lipase. So that's about one scoop, one medicine spoon of Pancrex V powder. We would mix that with a little bit of water and tell the nurse to add it to the bottle of feed, shake very well and administer straight away and not administer for more than six hours, just to try and ensure the stability of those enzymes. So if you remember some of my slides about the impact of acidity on the enzymes, Peptisol is a very low pH. So we wouldn't generally use Pancrex V powder in Peptisol because in Pancrex V powder, the enzymes aren't enteric coated. So they will be likely be denatured by the acid in the Peptisol. If you would rather administer the enzymes alongside the feed via the tube, then we would recommend, if it's going gastriically, probably mixing with certain bicarbonate and flushing it down the tube every two to four hours while the feed is running. Obviously, that is quite demanding for either patients or nurses. If the patient has a jejunal tube, then we would generally recommend avoiding flushing the enzymes down the tube just because of tube blockages. Also, we wouldn't recommend that the enzymes are taken orally because if a patient has a jejunal tube, it usually means that they have some element of delayed gastric emptying or gastric architec obstruction. So the feed will be running distally and the enzymes are likely to just be sitting in the stomach. So we would prefer, our favorable option is to add the enzymes to the feed and we would use the same technique that I discussed before. So next, diabetes. So type three C diabetes is the pancreatic nec diabetes. It's thought that about fifty percent of pancreatic cancer patients have diabetes and eighty five percent have glucose intolerance. And when we consider surgical patients who've had a big section of part or the whole of their pancreas, then patients who have had a total pancrectomy will definitely need insulin after surgery. Patients who've had Whipple's, about fifty percent of them will develop diabetes. There's no consensus in terms of the diagnosis criteria for type three C diabetes. Some, there's quite a wide, so there's a wide variation of practices across the UK. Some places will check blood sugars every time they see or follow up a patient with pancreatic cancer. Some places will check HPA1C routinely. Other places might give every patient diagnosed with pancreatic cancer a normal glucose tolerance test to assess whether they have diabetes. Or patients might be provided with a glucometer if we think their blood sugars might be a bit elevated. And I've put a copy there of the flow chart that's used at the Christie's for your information. They tend to check patients' blood sugars routinely during follow-up visits. And it's important to remember that untreated pancreatic exocrine insufficiency is likely to delay the diagnosis and treatment of diabetes. And that often type three C diabetes is misdiagnosed and mismanaged as type two diabetes, especially in the community. So type three C diabetes is very different from type two diabetes because there is less of hormones that are normally produced by the pancreas that are going to be produced in smaller quantities. So there will be a deficiency of insulin, glucagon, somatostatin, pancreatic peptide, etc. And these will have impact on the symptoms and the effects and the difficulties in managing the diabetes. So the lack of insulin will increase the risk of severe hyperglycemia. The deficiency in glucagon will increase the risk of severe hypoglycemia. And then if you think as well of the relationship between the tumor and the pancreas, the pancreas itself, it's quite a complex relationship. And and we don't know a whole, we don't know very much about it just yet. But we know that type three C diabetes behaves very differently from type two diabetes. Often, the clinical features are that patients present with accelerating weight loss and cachexia, especially if the diagnosis of pancreatic cancer is delayed and the diabetes is more brittle. The aims of our dietary treatment in type three C diabetes is to facilitate early diagnosis. So patients should have their blood sugars checked. And think about the fact that once you start somebody on pancreatic enzyme replacement therapy, there will be an increased absorption of glucose and carbohydrates. And you need to make sure that that doesn't increase their blood sugar significantly or that they have diabetes that hasn't been diagnosed. We, once the diagnosis is made, our aim is to prevent extreme hyper and hypoglycemia and to still prevent obviously those GI symptoms, the malabsorption and the malnutrition. So patients will often be started on glucose lowering agents when their blood sugars exceed twelve. Some of them have side effects which we need to be aware of. For example, metformin might worsen some of the GI symptoms our patients experience. And it's always useful to then consider switching to the modified released metformin. Well, a few patients will end up requiring insulin. And it's really quite difficult to keep up with the number of insulins available and they seem to have changed quite a lot in the last couple of years. But you've got your rapid short-acting insulin, your intermediate and long-acting and your premixed. The benefit of the patient starting on insulin is it's got an anabolic effect. And often, once patients are started on insulin, they get a little bit more clinical monitoring and support from the specialist diabetes team. But obviously, starting on insulin in practice is really difficult for our patients. They already have difficult mealtimes, having to think about the enzyme doses. And then if you add on top of that, the insulin and the blood sugar checking, that's quite difficult to manage. Especially as if the patient is newly diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, they've been through a difficult time and mealtimes have suddenly become so difficult. And that can be also difficult for staff when patients are admitted to hospital because staff and nurses, where we are a lot, are hypo and sometimes patients may be running fairly high blood sugars when they're in hospital and that might be precipitating the weight loss. So we should be thinking about basal bolus regimes, pumps, etc. And so I think it's important to manage expectations with the patients, make them aware that their diabetes treatment is likely to change depending on their clinical condition, on their oral intake, etc. But also make sure those patients are under specialist diabetes team. Especially if you think that blood sugar's control needs to be optimized, make sure you refer promptly to a specialist team. And then finally, in terms of our specific dietary treatment for type three C diabetes, what we what we try to avoid is high glycemic index food and drinks. So the first line would be to avoid sugary drinks, sweets. We wouldn't prescribe juice-based nutritional supplements. Encourage the patient to have regular starchy carbohydrates and regular meals. So three meals a day with maybe two or three snacks. The advice will be different depending on whether the patient is malnourished, has suffered a lot of weight loss or whether the patient has actually maintained their weight. We would advise on a high energy, high protein diet. It's important to advise patients to spread their protein intake through the day because that's been shown to help maintain muscle mass. And good muscle mass is what allows us to remain physically well, strong, independent. And also, it's been shown to have a very big impact on how well a patient might tolerate cancer treatment, whether that's chemotherapy or whether that's surgery. So again, giving individualized advice on protein sources, things that can be taken at mealtimes, at snack times and then food fortification advice and generally providing high calorie, high protein or nutritional supplements. Physical activity can help again with muscle mass but also with blood sugar control. And and finally, we would advise patients to avoid diabetes food because they can cause diarrhea. So again, a bit like in my previous slide, I would say that for a patient to manage the complexities of the nutrition support, the enteral nutrition, the enzyme replacement therapy, the blood sugar monitoring, the diabetes medication, it's very complex and the referral to a dietitian is essential. And that's it. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them later on. And here are my references and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Marie. That was brilliant presentation. So much covered there. Thank you so much. There's lots of positivity on the chat, particularly just about the troubleshooting and the practical approach of the presentation. So thank you so much for that. Okay, I think I think that's most people back. So welcome back. Hope you found that useful working through those case studies with Sophie and Mary and Marie. And we've now got some time for questions. So please do raise your digital hand if you'd like to ask a question or or post it, write it in the chat box. If it's for a particular person, then you can say that. And so yeah, hopefully I can keep an eye on that. And we did have a question earlier on, which was, this might probably be best for Marie, I think. So it says, just wondering why we don't give enzymes whilst building the feed up? So talking about enteral feeding. So I don't know if you can ask that and answer that, Marie, please.
Yeah, I just need to unmute myself. So so yes, it's not a hard rule and I think again, it will depend on the patient, on the location, on whether you've known the patient before, they had a cheap feed and how much enzymes they've required. So I would use your professional judgment. We don't tend to do it routinely because you have to think that the valleys in the small bowel will be producing some enzymatic activity that should be enough to digest some of the long chain fatty acids in the feed. And it's really, and especially if you're feeding somebody over twenty four hours or twenty hours, it's going at a slow rate. So the amount of remaining non-chain fatty acids that need to be broken down is quite small. So most patients will will usually be okay in my experience. And then it's when you try and increase the rate and reduce the time of feeding that the rate of feeding is higher. So you might have about a hundred mls of feed an hour going through a hundred and twenty. And that's when there might need to be some additional enzymes in there. I mean, the other thing is practically for the nurses, if you're feeding somebody over a long period of time and they have to, the nurses have to, or the patient have to administer the enzymes every two to three hours. It demands a lot and the chance of that not happening is fairly high. So and then it means waking the patients up in the night, etc. So it's about being practical, really.
Thanks, Marie. And there's another question here, maybe Sophie or Mary. And so the question is, I wondered if you would consider bile salt malabsorption with patients when diarrheal symptoms do not improve?
Do you want me to answer?
I think Mary's unmuted.
Yeah, I'm just sort of muted, sorry. And so yeah, that is something that we do consider. Obviously, first of all, we start them on the first, the first line, three capsules of enzymes with, or seventy five thousand units of lipase with meals, fifty thousand with snacks. If there's no improvement, ensure they're on a PPI. What we've suggested in our trust, and again, this will vary massively between trusts, is that we can go up as far as a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and fifty thousand with meals. And if there's no improvement, we tend to refer back to a HPB gastroenterologist and consider things like bile acid malabsorption, IBS, IBD, celiac disease. So the best thing to do there is if you're getting to a level where it's quite a high amount of enzymes, if you've switched over to different, different brands, I would refer back to a HPB gastroenterologist. if you've switched over to different brands, I would refer back to a HPB gastroenterologist.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I think that's definitely what we would recommend in terms of if you've gone through all the kind of troubleshooting with pert, then it makes sense to consider other possibilities for the diarrhea. I can't see anybody's hand up there on the, I think I'm looking to everybody. And I just wanted to ask, I know Sophie mentioned in her presentation a little, I touched a little bit on psychological support and maybe it's the impact of some of these emotional and psychological states on their nutrition, on their, you know, their appetite, all those sorts of things. So I suppose I was just interested to know if you kind of managed to get that into your assessments or your consultations with patients and how you might sort of offer that support or?
I think the slide that we showed with the pancreatic enzyme replacement therapy question there, it's something that we do look at. There's a question at the end saying how rating your symptoms and how they affect your quality of life. And so just to sort of maybe remind us that we do need to think about that in our consultations. In terms of what we would, what we do, I maybe try and speak to the medical team. If it was an inpatient, to see if they wanted, or ask the patient first if they wanted any support, if they were being referred to the palliative support care team in hospital. I think sometimes just listening to the patient as well and seeing what they want to do. I don't, I don't know if anyone else would do anything differently, Marie or Mary.
I think our patients in Manchester are lucky because we have a good HPB nutrition team and they would take on a lot of that role of supporting patients from a psychological point of view. I don't know if Mary, if it's any different to your end.
Yes, I would agree. I think it's really the cancer specialist nurses for us tend to do, be massive support for both us and the patients in those kind of scenarios.
Okay, we've got another question here, sorry. Do you routinely need to give pert to patients who have tumors of the tail of pancreas or have had a distal pancrectectomy? Good question.
I think for us, it varies massively. Again, it would be looking at symptoms. Initially, I would have thought, yeah, if someone had a distal pancrectectomy or it was a tail involvement, I didn't expect them to get the same kind of issues, but sometimes they do. So I think if there's any doubt, look for symptoms. If you're still not comfortable or confident in prescribing pert, you could check for fecal elastases.
Right. Yeah. Okay, I think, oh, sorry, I've got another one. Yeah. Would you still encourage pert with snacks, which are low in fat content, to cover carbohydrates and protein absorption? Or do you only provide pert with fat-containing foods?
No, I think we would provide pert with everything that's high of a patient that's nourishing. So carbohydrates will require some enzymatic activity. So maybe not as much as fat, but they would. So yes, let's say a piece of toast, even if it's dry, we would say take some with that, probably a small dose. But yes, take some with that. Maybe sugary drinks, we wouldn't really say take any because a simple sugar is very easily absorbable, but complex carbohydrates, yes, definitely.
Great. Well, time's just about done now. So thank you so much. We've covered an awful lot this morning. So I think we've, presentations have really shown how complex pancreatic cancer is and also the massive impact on nutrition that pancreatic cancer patients face. So thank you so much. So big thanks to Sophie, to Marie and Mary for sharing their expertise with us. And thanks to everyone that's joined us this morning. And so the presentations and the recording of the sessions will be available on our website. And you'll receive an email in the next couple of days to let you know when they're ready. And please do have, fill in, sorry, the evaluation form. You'll be directed to this when the webinar ends. And your feedback's really important and it does really impact how we do things and inform us. And we've still got a couple more national study sessions coming up. And with the next one tomorrow, which is a more advanced session on dietetic management and pancreatic cancer. And then the week after, we'd love for you to join our discussion on providing emotional support to patients and their families under COVID restrictions. And there's more information on that in your delicate pack. And so on behalf of me and the team at Pancreatic Cancer UK, thanks so much again for joining us. And we hope that you found the session really interesting and we hope to see you again soon. Thank you.